You have to do it.
There were one last one.
Mary minutes.
Where is there?
It's actually.
Just thought you were extremely busy.
We were breaking.
Uh, did I say something that they got back?
Mm-hmm. They all went down. All of them.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, your host.
Say, uh, nice when those were all.
Sunday comes. You saw my call said live. Two of them back out. Half marathon.
Yeah, they don't make fresh on marathon.
Glad you are here.
I do marathon from town.
Who do you want?
And sometime.
I was going to say.
That's the long run.
It's the long run.
The endurance circuit.
It looks like they ran a three day time.
For the race. Damn state.
Damn state.
Damn state the rest of the week.
I did the race on hard night. I had fun in Key West before the race. I couldn't do it.
It was funny that they were running at Bruce Marter.
Well, that's something before it was in our paper.
It was a large school, wasn't it? I'm saying a red area. What was that? Oh, yeah.
I'll order the January meeting of the Maumell Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Grummer, Mr. Line, do we have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, um, we have no, uh, no plats that were filed to report, uh, from the previous month. And, uh, do, we do have an announcement pertaining to Project DS, but we'll wait until, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. We'll move on, we have, yeah, move on to approval of the minutes. You've all been provided a copy of the minutes in your packets. Do we have any discussion or commentary on the minutes?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those of you who have a yes?
Yes.
Does both know? Minutes are approved. Uh, I have no public comments on non-agenda items. We will open the public hearing. Uh, we have old business. Uh, seeing that the Ashley's Paradise Mountain Commercial Park has been withdrawn. Is that correct, Mr. Grummer?
Mr. Chair, after a discussion with the city attorney, um, the, uh, staff withdrew it because of a lack of action, uh, on the applicant, uh, in the midst of trying to work, uh, this out. So, uh, rather than withdrawing in order to pull it from old business, uh, staff's recommendation is just a denial and they can reapply, uh, if they feel like, um... Anytime a plat is denied, we provide the letter and then they have the ability to reapply. And it, there's no timeline. They can come back the next month, but it gives time to determine, um, what, um... What the next steps are going to be, anything?
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. If I understand correctly, staff is recommending a, an action on this item and a denial. Do we have any general discussion on this agenda item?
So, the denial is a lack of, um, of appropriate, or the appropriate information for review?
So, that's correct. So, the, the plat that was submitted, uh, had, uh, there were conflicts with right of way. There was, there was conflicts with, um, lot lines, a lot of items that had to be worked out. So, in the midst of that, uh, we couldn't come to agreements. They had presented to us a reduced plat that would have not been all of the area that, uh, would have worked. Uh, but we've yet, and we've reached out to the, uh, applicant, uh, and the applicant's representative, and, uh, they've not responded to us, uh, for that. So, rather than continuing to defer this, uh, I prefer to just bring it off the agenda.
So, the application was complete?
It was complete. They, they did pay a fee and went through the whole process, um, so...
No representation from?
Uh, no, sir.
Do we have any discussion or any motion on this item?
Does this even need an action?
Well, the, the application was complete and they submitted. So, it does, they met, they met the requirements of the application, but there were issues.
To submit, correct. But we could not get the plat, um, to comply enough. There was too many non-compliant, non-compliances with the plat. So, we couldn't bring it into a state that the staff could, um, even present it to Planning Commission. Uh, I say that. Now, if you prefer to withdraw it and just, uh, pull it off, you didn't, I just didn't want it to linger on the old business.
It could be, it could be tabled indefinitely. It could be tabled definitely or indefinitely.
It's the third time around, Mr. Chair?
It sounds correct.
Yeah, third time.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes. I, I mean...
If you wish to table it indefinitely, we could do that and, and if it ever comes back up. I'd love to be able to work with them, but it's just, uh, we haven't been able to get any responses at this point.
If we table it, do they, or if we deny it, do they have to pay the fee and all that again?
Uh...
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would, my preference would be to indefinitely table it.
That's your motion?
If they want to work with us. If not, it's just...
Is there any, is there any effect, Mr. Grummer? Is there any effect on the workload that it puts on staff to have a new submission versus revamping a, an existing submission? I understand that you are recommend, you initially recommended a denial of this, but, uh, we'd hate to put any more work on you if it's not necessary.
It'll still be the same amount of work, uh, when it comes back because of the level of, uh, technicality and coordination with the county and the right of way and all the things that we have to check. So, there's a, there'll be a significant amount of review that would be required.
So, you, you reached out to these applicants and they were just, um, they just did not respond to your, to your inquiries?
That's right. I, uh, reached out by phone and by, uh, by email. And the, the surveyor of record who's, uh, doing the, um, uh, the survey said that he hasn't received any updates from the, uh, from the ownership. So, again, I'm not, a lack of communication, um, does not necessarily say that they're not wanting to move forward. But again, there's, they have no pressure at this point anymore, um, to do, I don't know if they've resolved it some other way or what.
It's been, they, when is the last time you heard from them?
Uh, it would have been back in December.
Further discussion or a motion? Anyone?
I will say, I'm, I am not opposed to, um, tabling indefinitely if we can bring them to the table.
I mean, I don't want to, my position is I don't want to encumber this applicant, you know, they're, they own property that's of interest in our development and the communities, especially out there in the interchange area. I, I, I just want to give them a little bit of the benefit of the doubt, but I, I don't know, Mr. Chair, three months of benefit of the doubt.
I share your concerns, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so I don't know if we're not giving them ever opportunity to, uh, be able to be responsive to the application. Your recommendation is still to deny, Greg Scott? You said you didn't have a preference to, or table?
After discussion with city attorney, that was one of the, uh, decisions that we'd made, but either way, I, I can go either way. Uh, if you want to table it, we are trying to work with the applicants in the north part of Maumell. They are a large land ownership. I would like to accommodate them as we're working with both county and city. So, at, with that point, if the, if the commission is not opposed to leaving it on old business indefinitely, if it does come up, so be it. That'd be great to be able to work with them, so I'll leave that up to the commission.
I'll make a motion to table. I, I mean, I would, I think it's in our best interest to work, to work with this entity.
Is the motion to table for a definite time or indefinite?
Uh, yeah. Well, any point of time, I guess we can change. Um, it would be...
If it's indefinite, it would just require a motion from the commission to pull back.
Yeah, it's, we'll do indefinite. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Those of you who have a yes?
Yes.
Does both know? All right, that is tabled indefinitely. Move on to new business, uh, Project DS, which, if certain announcements are to be believed, may have a, an actual proper name. Uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to make any comment on that?
Sure, why not? I think the cat's out of the bag. Um, I'd like to take a minute. I know you all have heard of Project DS for a while. For those that haven't, uh, uh, seen the news or social media, uh, Tractor Supply has decided to build a, uh, distribution center out here. I'm wearing my Tractor Supply purchase boots, which was complete coincidence, but, uh, I like them. It makes it look like I've worked. Uh, we spent a considerable amount of time, uh, working on this. This project has gone back for several years, uh, uh, dealing with the select site and trying to get that property marketable. A lot of things goes to former Community and Economic Development Director, uh, Judy Keller, who worked long and hard to get that site certified with the, uh, owners and working with Entergy. And I believe originally working with, uh, Tractor Supply, Project DS, and it had a few other code names before that. Um, but for those that don't know, it's supposed to be about a nine hundred thousand square foot distribution, uh, uh, center that's supposed to house, uh, at some point up to four hundred and fifty full-time employees. There here, I would just ask the Planning Commission to, uh, uh, be welcoming to, uh, Tractor Supply, uh, with this project known formally as Project DS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Grummer, um, any further commentary? And if not, let's, uh, go for the staff report on the preliminary plat.
Um, well, just a little commentary in the sense that, uh, I'm very thankful now that the, uh, the, uh, uh, non-disclosure, uh, agreement is open and I can openly speak of the company name. Uh, and I want to thank, uh, the mayor and his support, uh, in providing the culture here that, uh, we can work with and allow these things to happen. And thankful, uh, for Judy Keller, uh, and the current Economic Development, uh, Director, Courtney Dunn, uh, for their work to, uh, get us to where we are. So, moving on to the, uh, the first item, preliminary plat. So, uh, what you have before you is a request to allow a one-lot subdivision plat for an industrial development site for proposed warehouse distribution center and parking, uh, for, uh, plus or minus a hundred and nineteen acres located at one hundred and fifty Champs Boulevard. Last month, Planning Commission acted on the site plan. Typically, the Planning Commission would see the plat and the site plan together, but based on, uh, the timetables and, uh, the, uh, just the process that this goes through in order to, first off, allow Maumell to be chosen, which is all up to the last minute. Um, and then trying to get, uh, the timetables for the company. Uh, they did request the plat to be, uh, held because they worked on the site plan, uh, for the first thing. Uh, you approved the site plan last month, um, and, uh, this month, uh, with the plat, um, it does, uh, the preliminary plat, the property lays out the needed easements and one abandoned easement for the moving of an existing gas line. Uh, the plat lays out proposed detention areas, uh, which the city engineers approved, uh, the preliminary drainage plans, uh, as of twelve twenty-nine twenty-eight twenty-one. Uh, no areas of the plat fall within a designated wetland or floodway, uh, and staff comments have, uh, been provided. The applicant is also, uh, requesting with the preliminary plat, um, a variance, uh, which is the second item under this, um, uh, for section ninety-four dash four, uh, due to, um, the city not having a grading permit. And, uh, due to the extraordinary timelines needing to be met by the company's development schedule, uh, the applicant has provided a grading and drainage plan. As I mentioned, the city engineer has reviewed and approved it, and, uh, staff, uh, does recommend approval, um, of that as well. With one contingency that was added, uh, after this report went out, and that is just contingent upon, uh, the receipt, review and approval of a, uh, floodplain development plan. Typically, uh, your floodplain development plan and your grading plan, drainage, all that comes in with the civil plans at the time of building plan review. Um, since they're requesting this before building plan review because they're still working on the building plans, um, but they do want to get started on the site so they can get a head start to stay on top of their times, time schedules. Um, they've asked for that variance. And, uh, so with that, uh, the, uh, review of the floodplain development plan, uh, permit would be a little earlier than normal in the process. So, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Do we have any discussion from the commission? And we do have applicant representatives if we have any questions to, of the applicant.
And, and of course, uh, Mr. Chair, being that, uh, this is really one of the, I guess, the first public forum in which, uh, the applicant, the applicant's representative can openly speak of the company, uh, just as the mayor. Uh, this may be the one and only opportunity that the company would have in order to speak at a public forum such as this. So, I'll welcome any comments if you're wanting that. Either way, uh, that's it, the chair, that's...
Uh, to our applicant, the commission's being a little quiet right now. So, if you have any commentary, please, uh, press above you. But, uh, don't feel compelled if you would like to speak. Uh, you're welcome to, and just, uh, name an address and, uh, let us know what you'd like to say.
Yes, I'm, uh, Brad Anderson. I'm with H and M Company and, um, at, uh, Fifty Security Drive, Jackson, Tennessee. And we are going to be the design-built firm for Tractor Supply on this project. We've, we've built, uh, this will be our seventh distribution center we've built with Tractor Supply around the country. And, and I, and I can say on behalf of the client that, uh, we're excited to be here. Uh, Maumell is a good fit, uh, for Tractor Supply, and, uh, we're excited to be here. We, uh, enjoy working with the community and all of you here. And, um, Scott's done a great job helping us through the process, uh, and getting to this point. So, we've, uh, felt really, really welcome and we've had a lot of help. And that's, that's always good when we, when you have a project of this magnitude coming into the community. It just helps to have all the players on board. So, we appreciate that and thank you for all you've done.
Welcome to Maumell.
Give us an idea of your timeframe of construction?
So, right now, uh, we are in the process of completing building design and plan on submitting that for permit review mid-March. Uh, I believe we are, uh, planning to submit our final grading plans and, uh, for stormwater designs, uh, next week. And, uh, we, uh, it's, uh, we're in the process of bidding some of the, the packages right now, construction packages for subcontractors. So, as soon as we can, uh, get a permit to, to grade and, and, uh, get it, uh, our subcontractors lined up and the weather gets to where we can start. We're planning to start sometime early this spring, probably, probably, uh, uh, March or April, depending on the weather.
So, your firm is construction manager, do you see?
Yes, we are. Yes, sir.
Are you self-performing any of the work?
Uh, that will depend. We, we do have self-performing companies, uh, but we will bid to local as well as some of our self-performing companies. And we typically go with, uh, the most, uh, effective contract on each, on each bid package. So, uh, so we will have the opportunity for local contractors to be involved as well.
Further questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I have a move, preliminary plat for Project DS contingent upon meeting all the staff, city engineer and commissioner comments.
Second.
A motion in two seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Those of you who have a yes?
Yes.
Does both know? All right. Preliminary plat is approved. And now convene the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We'll move into the next item, the variance request for section ninety-four dash four. Uh, Mr. Grummer, staff report.
Um, so I, I briefly spoke about this, uh, on, uh, the previous one. Uh, I will say that, um, the, the city, uh, the, in response to, uh, back, uh, last year, uh, to the, uh, opportunity that was presented, um, in knowing that a grading, uh, permit was needed, we started that process. Uh, we did run the grading permit through Planning Commission and City Council. Went to City Council and City Council sent it back to Planning Commission, which is on your agenda tonight. Uh, we did not anticipate the delays of that. We're hoping to be able to utilize that for, uh, Tractor Supply Company. But, um, but because of that delay, there still may be opportunity to still use that if it moves through tonight, uh, and if it moves on through City Council. But, uh, in the interim of trying to support a large industry that's coming to the city of Maumell, we wanted a Plan B just in case, uh, we're unable... But, uh, with that, they did provide ahead of time the drainage and, um, uh, the drainage and grading plans, which we provided electronically. If you're not acting on those tonight, I just wanted to show that they ha- have done their diligence and they are moving forward with the information to provide to city for review in order to, to approve that. So, as mentioned before, um, the, uh, this has been reviewed by the city engineer, um, and, uh, our certified floodplain manager, Mr. Trent Carter. And we've reviewed, uh, the proposed site. And, um, uh, uh, the site is in a fu- uh, is in a floodplain, uh, but we do not, uh, we do not see, uh, any potential adverse impacts upstream or downstream. But again, that would be detailed out whenever they, uh, submit their final civil plans and the, uh, floodplain development, uh, permit request. That concludes, uh, staff recommends approval, uh, contingent on, um, receiving those things.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any discussion from the commission on the variance request?
I, I think it's important that, I mean, I read through the correspondence that Scott sent us, is that, that, you know, as we've courted this entity and as we continue to court other entities that are coming in, is that I think we need to be a little bit man of a word. The intention was is to get that pushed through with council. Wanted to push back because of some other, I think, interests that really didn't involve, uh, the project at hand here and while we did it. So, you know, um, the entity thought, or Tractor Supply in this case, it's no more DS anymore, but Tractor Supply had anticipated this to be moved through and they could go ahead and start. And this keeps them on the same schedule if we grant the variance. So, I think that's important to consider in this case because we've, we, we tried our best to be able to move it forward. It got kicked back, but this allows us them to keep schedule. So, and I think the issues at hand that were out of council are, are a little outside the scope that's before us with Tractor Supply. Uh, do you, I don't know if you, I know that that item's on the agenda tonight. We've not discussed it yet, but it's kind of the way that I see it.
Well, and, and I will say that, um, you know, the, uh, the purpose of the, of that ordinance ninety-four dash four, uh, is to prevent, uh, landowners around the city from just cutting down trees and clearing trees. And we have a blank, uh, we want to protect that integrity of that. Um, but for local landowners and local developers, uh, you know, that's something that we really want to monitor and police. But, uh, when you deal with a project like this that is in the backside of our industrial park, it's not seen, uh, anywhere. It's pretty much no one will ever see it. It's hidden unless you go to it. Um, and the fact that they have invested a lot up to this point to be where it is, it's, it's a different type of scenario than your typical, um, request for a variance when it comes to this. So, um, I think, uh, if the city is, uh, unable to provide, uh, much for the company, this is one of the things that we can at least help with is the process to make sure they're staying on track.
Well, you see what the intent is before us. So, it was nice of them to provide that, so we, there's no guessing game going on here.
Right.
I make a motion, we allow the, to approve, uh, and allow the grading, uh, prior to the building permit for Project DS contingent on meeting all the staff, city engineer and commissioner comments.
Second.
Second. Have a motion multiple seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Those of you who have a yes?
Yes.
Does both know? All right, motion passes. Now, uh, close the Board of Zoning Adjustment and reconvene the Planning Commission. Uh, stand corrected, the Board of Zoning Adjustment will stay open for the first item, uh, first sub item by number two. Move on to the Brock Town Homes. Mr. Grummer, staff report, please.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for, for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Be with me one moment. Mr. Chair. Alrighty, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to go ahead and kind of give my overall, um, description and analysis of this. Um, you'll find on your, uh, on your agenda that we have a, uh, three variances before you, um, prior to action on the proposed, uh, development plan plat and landscape plan. The reason for that is that, um, those variances, uh, may weigh in on the approvals of the other documents. So, uh, having those acted on beforehand would be important. Um, so I'll kind of give you an overview of the project. The property being reviewed, um, was previously approved for a commercial development in twenty nineteen. However, that project did not move forward and the preliminary development plan and plat expired. Uh, the proposed town home project, having twenty-nine lots in clusters less than six, uh, create R-two density of less than twelve units per acre. Adjacent uses include R-one, single-family detached to the east and light office and educational uses to the north, all of which are surrounded by golf course. Uh, the proposed project is being described as an owner-occupied town home development with views of the golf course, which would be comparable to the types situated around the Maumell Country Club Golf Course. Uh, the proposed use conforms, uh, to the existing PRD zone. And although moves, uh, away from prior commercial approvals, the use, uh, may be considered a, um, a better fit for the mid-block area on Country Club Boulevard. Uh, its development could potentially facilitate commercial growth on the adjacent Vanquett Fountain Blue Parcel, previously approved for commercial and office uses. And, uh, to note, uh, that particular, uh, preliminary development plan has not expired. It was actually, uh, brought back and renewed. So, um, the variances that you have before you, one is variance to section ninety-four dash four-four-nine, which would be acted upon within BZA, uh, being that it's section ninety-four, chapter ninety-four of our ordinance. Uh, the other two items, uh, variances are under section seventy, our subdivision ordinance, and that is not acted upon by BZA. That's just, uh, Planning Commission, uh, can act on those. So, this first variance, uh, to section ninety-four dash four-four-nine is a request to reduce, uh, private green space. So, the request, uh, is, uh, for exceptions to private green space requirements from five hundred feet, uh, five hundred square feet usable private green space, uh, to approximately, uh, one hundred and twenty square feet of patio and balcony space and allow open space areas in lieu. Uh, this comes from section ninety-four dash four-four-nine, which is, uh, the PRD, um, ordinance. Uh, the reason, uh, that they've stipulated is that the, uh, the development type is, uh, parceled out to create individual parcel lots for ownership, not rental. This isn't meant, uh, the intention is not to be a rental project, but more of a owner occupied. And with that, they're trying to reduce the amount of maintenance requirements for each individual owner. Uh, they're seeing the demographics that would be coming in here would be wanting very limited maintenance. So, uh, with that, uh, they have obtained, um, open space. Uh, they've doubled their open space from a minimum requirement of fifteen percent up to thirty percent. And, uh, so they're just asking for, uh, the balconies and, uh, to be in the small area within the lot, uh, which is approximately a hundred and twenty square feet, uh, to be the exception to this. Staff, uh, applicant, uh, does meet the intent of the ordinance with common open space, thereby reducing individual private maintenance. Uh, staff does recommend approval.
I, I do have a question.
Mr. Fisher, let me, uh, stop real quick. We do have a, uh, comment part on this one I'd like to get before we get into...
Okay.
...further discussion. Uh, Mr. Jenkins?
I don't, don't care to make a comment on this particular thing.
Is there a particular part of, uh, the Brock Town Homes that, uh, just to make sure that I, uh, let you have your, uh, commentary at the appropriate time?
My name is Tim Jenkins and I live at one thirty-four Margaux here in Maumell. But I'm also one of the owners of the Country Club of Arkansas Golf Course, which is, uh, we practically wrap around this subdivision. And I just wanted to say that after meeting, uh, with the, with the, with the designer of the project, that we actually favor this type of, of a development versus the, the previous approved use of the land, which was commercial. That we actually feel like the, uh, having permit residents in this area both beautify the, uh, the appearance of the area from our golf course property, also from the road. Provides, you know, a, a breathtaking view for the residents of the golf course. Uh, and all in all, we feel like bringing this together would finish, or nearly finish, uh, the area, which has been for a long time left unfinished and actually rather unsightly. So, uh... So we're, in, in theory, we're very much in favor of this moving forward and continuing. And we think it's in the best interest of our company and our business, as well as the entire Country Club of Arkansas neighborhood. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Fisher, you got a comment?
Yeah, clarification, Scott, on the variance. Did I understand you to say that as part of the open green space that you're including the patios of each of the individual owners to come up with the calculation?
Well, so again, they're, they're trying to get away from the, the, the green space requirement and just utilizing other things within the, when you look at what constitutes open space in these areas, there is wording that says you can have 50% water for open space. So it's not necessarily, has to be green grass. It's just a matter of having some space. But yes, sir, they are stating that the balconies, they're wanting to, they had mentioned that in their letter.
When you say balconies, but you really mean the patio on the ground floor, do you not?
Patio, I believe they had submitted, even though you don't have to approve on the, the elevations, I believe they did submit some elevations of the project that kind of provide, and I, it's probably better for me to defer it to the applicant to be able to address that.
Roy Andrews, 3 Monarch Drive. So the intent is each unit has a balcony and a patio, and that that would be the private open space, but then the rest of the 500 feet of the requirement, the minimum requirement's 500 feet of private open space. We want to throw all the rest of that into the common open space for this development so that the owners don't have to maintain it, the POA can control the look of that, keep it clean, keep it mowed, and that the tenants or the owners of the property don't have to worry about anything outside their patio or balcony. They can use it. We have up to nearly 30% of open space, but it would be for all the residents of this development.
The owner of each of the units only going to own the footprint of the building?
Correct, correct. They would own the.
Which would include the patio.
That's correct, that's correct. Patio and a balcony.
So that's where I'm trying to figure out why that is being brought in because that's, my patio wouldn't be for your use.
No, it's not. And it, the intent is that the patio and the balcony are private open space for that owner only.
Okay.
But the requirement by code ordinance is 500 square feet. We're only providing 120 square feet approximately between those two options.
And I apologize for, I'm sorry, not clarifying that. There's, there's both private and common.
So they shifted the private to common.
To common, right.
When you said that, I was a little confused what you were saying.
Yes, thanks for clarifying. That's right. So rather than the minimum 15% of common open space, they have 30% common open space and they, they're asking for a reduction of the required private open space.
Okay.
Further discussion from the commission? Hearing no discussion, does anyone have a motion?
Are we taking these variances one at a time?
Correct, right now would be the one related to private green space, 94-449.
And I apologize, on the notes that I provided you that we just take notes on, it unfortunately clumped all the variances together, so I don't have a separate section for each. So that's not very clear on my, my minute taking information.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the variance for section 94-449, reduce the private green space.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes, opposed no? All right, motion is approved. We'll adjourn the board zoning adjustments and reconvene the planning commission, move on to the variance of section 70-136. Would any further staff report?
Yes, sir. So section 70-136 to reduce the setback along arterial roads. So the, the setback requirement, which is within our design standards for streets, as well as our master street plan, requires 35-foot setback from an arterial. Previously, when they had approached with their first draft, they had a density of, I believe, 32 or 31 units, somewhere around there.
31.
31. Since then, they, after our, after working on, on it, they've reduced the density to 29. And with that, that they've been able to reduce the clusters to make it a townhome development, less than six units or six or less units combined. And with that, they're able to pull those townhomes away from the street and rather than 20 feet, now they're actually 30 feet. So they're just five foot off the requirement. And from my standpoint, I look at how the frontages also line up with adjacent properties. There is an adjacent residential development to the northeast from this, and these setbacks are probably pushed forward approximately five to seven feet in front of those. But when you go up and down the Country Club Parkway, all the homes vary anywhere from curb to the building between 40 and 45 feet. If you draw a line on this one, from curb to building, it's approximately 42 feet. So they're within the actual building setback for the majority of the single-family homes that front Country Club Parkway. So with that, I felt that the concession of five feet, in order to accomplish what they're trying to do, and they've also reduced the density to take some of the impact off, constitutes, staff supports the variance request.
Any discussion from the commission?
Do you have a question? On the setback of the, and it varies a little bit from 30 feet to 31 feet type thing, but is that from the building line to where the patio would be or to where the actual building would be?
The patio sits within the building, so it's the patio and the building is the 30.
Dimensions to the edge of the building.
Which includes the patio. The patio sits with inside that. So when I say 31 feet or 30 feet, that's to the edge of the patio, to the edge of the building.
Balcony overhangs?
No, it does not.
What's overhang on site plan then? What is that?
There's sidewalks and grass.
Yeah, grass area.
I'm talking about like for building number three.
Yeah, the way I read, those are, those are sidewalks with individual walks coming down.
Oh, I see. I'm looking at it. I see the grass in there now. Okay.
Recession, will you stick out? No, recess. You don't, do you have the elevations?
Yeah, patterns, so the pattern on the fills similar. Plus, I can't see them.
And the, and the property line is on the right-of-way line, so there's additional space before you get to the actual curb of the street. And the elevations Jason has brought up on top of the.
It's painted, it sticks out.
Commissioner Fisher, as I look at that, it's great, it'll give you a better representation.
Mr. Chairman, is, is, was the 35-feet requirement from the edge of the right-of-way on the arterial?
No, well, the, well, yes, from the, well, the right-of-way is the property lines, would be 35 feet from the property line.
Just making sure. Okay.
Move the building. Go to there. Because this is the edge of the building.
Their patio sit on their private property. So what you're saying on the site plan is the outline of the property, which is all-inclusive of patios, buildings, garages.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to just read the findings that the commission needs to make in order to grant a variance in chapter 70.
Yes, please do.
This section states the planning commission shall only approve variances in respect to this chapter where it finds that. Number one, the granting of the variance will be neither detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, nor injurious to other property. Number two, the conditions upon which the request for variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other properties. Number three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, strict application of this chapter would deprive the owner of reasonable use of his property. Number four, the variance will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning requirements in chapter 94, the master street plan, or the land use plan. For purposes of plating lots, abutting, or fronting on streets identified as requiring special setbacks in the master street plan, the plated building lines shall conform to the plan. Number five, the variance is not based solely on pecuniary difficulties, but has other overriding hardships. So you will need to make findings that all of those requirements have been met to approve of this variance and the following.
Well, Mr. Andrews, I'll ask the hard question. What is it about this particular piece of property that really makes you need an extra five feet?
One, the shape of it, trying to allow enough access between the units. We do have a requirement to add a fire hydrant on site. There are three adjacent to the property. The fire department has requested one be on site, and we're looking at place one per their request, which is adjacent to the five parking places. But to keep it out of the swing of the gate, it has to be in an island adjacent to lot 21. And to provide the necessary setbacks around that, fire hydrant, allow the fire truck to get in and out, the five feet would really constrict on that, would potentially take out multiple units. But the five feet gets us extra flow. We're not at grade with the road. These buildings will be five feet roughly above the back of curb, so they'll not have a safety issue. You won't have to worry about cars running up in there. There's tree plantings. When you get to the landscape plan, you're going to see we have trees planted all in front of the building. So I don't believe that there's an issue that it's a safety concern. We do have other properties that are, do, are closer. This keeps intent with all of the, as Mr. Grummer said earlier, this keeps intent with the houses up and down the boulevard.
I don't know, from a development standpoint, reading the variances, it'd be tough to have anything approved there, they went with the similar density. Because the five feet's going to eat into the building where he'll lose all building five and, that's what's going to, I said, you have 30, I had stated site plan intently, but, you know, you have 30 feet, so you back into five, then you don't have enough room for parking. So the developer would lose a lot, well, two, three, probably three, three buildings on five. I mean, I'm sure Roy's already done that.
Probably a building or two.
I'm sure Roy tried to lay it out within 10 of meeting the ordinance and was not successful with the, to make, to make the development fly.
You'll also, if I may have missed this, but if you look at the actual plat that Jason has up, the, the squeeze point there between, what is that, lot 21 and lot 13?
Yes.
Push that back.
Three and lot 21.
Yeah, if you, if you push that back, that's, that's a really squeeze point. So you, they're really fighting for as much room as they can. So just the nature of the design of the lot, how the lot is configured in order to accommodate the design type.
You receiving public comment?
Yes, and I'm sorry if I didn't touch base on that. The public comments, we had two. We basically had one resident who had called in and stated comments against residential would prefer commercial on the site, and the other one was for, and that was actually the ownership of Country Club of Arkansas, Country Club of Arkansas Golf Course.
Any indication if the first public comment was from an adjoining landowner?
No, it was somebody else further in CCA.
Mr. Andrews, have, have you or the developer heard any comment from any of the neighboring landowners of this?
I, we have not. I'll look.
Name and address, please.
Carol Brock, 2 Carney Hand Court, Maumell.
Thanks, Mr. Brock. Have you, have you gotten any commentary from any of the neighbors?
The only ones I've talked to is Mr. Jenkins, and his mother lives in one of the houses that joins his property. And the next variance about the fence, he was in agreement with me that they don't need it.
And.
I don't want to get into that now, but he, he didn't really want the fence.
And all notifications, legal, legal notifications were placed. And also representative that's on the CCA POA was known about it to mention it out to the POA, so we haven't received any feedback, at least at this point.
Further discussion?
By instead of the public and private issue that we discussed before and looking at the plan for the building, looks like what you would lose on buildings two, three, and four would be the patio, pretty much. Wouldn't necessarily lose that much on the interior. Now, you probably would lose lot six. They're going to lose five foot of the building.
I think Commissioner Fisher's suggesting the buildings could be, didn't have a patio as a roof.
You move patio over 4.6 feet. And what we said earlier, the setback goes to the patio, the way that is.
You're, you're losing a foot and a half of the upstairs.
One.
That front bedroom?
Yeah, that's four foot six, but that's their front porch and patio. And it comes up from the building.
Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance on section 7136 to reduce the setback along the arterial.
Second.
The only thing we're discussing here is the setback in comparison. I'll leave my comments.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Does it favor yes? Yes, opposed no? All right, motion is approved. We'll move on to the next variance regarding section 70-136 regarding the fence. Staff report, please.
So when you're, can you, can you pull the landscape plan up, Jason, it may help out a little bit? So if you, when you're looking on the, the northeast side where the property bounds the, the residential lots, there's, there's a buffer zone there, which is 25 feet. And then there's also a 10-foot space that is owned by the POA. There's no, no pathways or sidewalks in there. It's just POA-owned. That's the empty strip. There's existing private fences that are up against the existing residential properties. And the, the applicant has stated that they would prefer not to put up a private fence on this side. After evaluation of it, staff determined that if you put up, so the ordinance itself in 70-136 requires a 25-foot buffer, but it also requires a 6-foot private fence to be placed. If you put up that fence, then you're going to have
If you put up that fence, then you're going to have a 10-foot space spanning the entire way that will be pretty much inaccessible, would create a place for people to walk through or creep through, and just from a design standpoint, I can see the interest in just wanting to keep it open. So I haven't received any comments concerning the actual putting up of the fence on this side, but when you look at what the planning commission previously had approved on the Fountain Blue commercial development on it, they had a, they had, the planning commission approved a landscape buffer in lieu of the fence. So the applicant has provided additional landscaping with evergreens with interest there for fast growing to create an actual buffer within that area. That concludes staff's comments. Staff recommends approval.
Question, I mean, if the applicant adhered to the requirements of the code, you're going to have a 10-foot, was it 10-foot? No man's land.
Correct.
Correct.
It's the same thing was on the west side of Fountain Blue. Then there was a sidewalk over there, too, which they did have them, but that's true issue there, too.
Which made more sense there, right.
Yeah, it'd be a 10-foot corridor worth of privacy comes on each side.
He's talking about this area right here, where the houses are, they already have a fence.
Yeah.
And if we drop it over and put a fence and have a 10-foot alleyway going through there. Mr. Jenkins, I explained to him, and he said, "We don't need that because the trees won't grow as good, the grass won't grow as good. If it's open, sunlight gets in and it's dry." We just want to maintain that 10-foot. That is the POA's. Who's POA?
Of the development.
Those houses, these houses right here.
Well, it's...
It's backed up right here. Actually...
I believe it's the Country Club of Arkansas. It's on the ownership.
Oh, okay.
CCA POA.
But it was, it was a requirement of the development when they came through, though, with the houses, or was it a requirement of the Country Club? I don't think it matters, but...
I'm not too sure on that one.
I'll just, developments in the past, if the fence is not installed, there's no guarantee. There's always going to be a fence there.
Well, I mean, we'd have to look at POA, their rules. It may be that they maintain the fence.
Maybe in the bill of assurance.
I mean, I think there is a...
It's a city obligation.
I think there's a fairly unique part of this. Fences there or not, they are there now, and I think it's fairly unique to have the situation where you could create this fenced-off alley for, you know...
Criminals and crooks to sneak in behind the, that's what I would be worried is a safety issue.
Maintenance is made more difficult, so...
Yeah, I'd be worried about people walking in that alley and sneaking around a little bit.
Well, I agree with that. It's just a matter of who's going to maintain that 10-foot no man's land.
Well, that 10-foot no man's land is on the adjoining property. It's not your property.
Correct.
It's already being, well, I don't know if it is being maintained, I think it should be.
There's a fence there, and I'm going to mow on the other side of that fence, and I don't even see it. I don't think so.
I don't know if there's any grass up there.
It's not the individual law owners that maintain that 10-foot structure behind their fence. It's POA or Country Club.
It's not maintained at all.
Yeah, it's a natural area. It's already kind of left natural.
Yeah, but now that you've got a development in there, is it going to let you grow up weeds? I figure when we clear our stuff, we'll clear it, put it south full on it, sod it, and I'll probably sprinkle it, because we're going to have to sprinkle the rest of it in.
If you're, it goes without saying for you to mark it.
Well, that's...
I think that's my...
Yeah.
Well, if it's CCA, and it seems like Tim's gone, but he was here, he seems like he was in support of it. I'm sure he'd work with you if he owns it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not maintained at all. I just pulled it up on Google, or I think it's the same way. I don't think it's maintained on the other side either.
No.
And I'm sorry, it's not the country, it's not the golf course that owns it, it's the POA.
Yeah, POA CCA.
POA for CCA.
It will look better when I get done.
Well, that's what I was kind of hoping to get you to say, that you had a...
You can't afford an applicant to work on other private property, Mr. Fisher.
Well, I understand that, but I think it would behoove him to work with the ownership, so...
But again, he's got adverse possession potentially coming his way.
That's true. You're going to keep it up. I think POA would keep it up, too.
Yeah.
I doubt it.
It'll be easier once it's cleaned up.
Talk to them, sod. And I will do that if they'll let me. Well, I have doubts as to if they'll have any objections.
Yeah, I don't think they will.
Quite frankly.
All right, further discussion on the fence variance?
I make a motion to approve Section 71-36, defense requirement for Brocktown Town Homes contingent on meeting all staff and city engineer and Commissioner Collins.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Does in favor, yes? Yes? I suppose no? Motion passes. We'll now move into the preliminary development plan approached staff report.
The, so with the preliminary development plan, the only comment that we had concerning the development plan was the variance contingencies and the impacts on it, since those were passed by planning commission, no further comments from staff. Staff recommends a due pass recommendation to City Council for the preliminary development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any discussion from the commission?
I think the key pads on the wrong side there, Roy.
Well, no.
Is it on the right side?
It is on the right side for the drivers. All the residents will have clickers. That would be for somebody making a delivery.
Gotcha. Okay. Is... So the cross-access easement, so you're gated now, all this is private, was private before for that matter. I guess private in the sense of it's secure or more secure. So this, I guess what I'm saying is that you do have some type of arrangement here the way that you have this configured with the Country Club of Arkansas, not to get in your business here, but there's something going to be in place for that. Because I was concerned with this because the, before, we had two entrances and we had a fire comment at subcommittee. It's completely different, so now you got one in, one out.
Right, we have one, that's right. And it's all on our property, except for Country Club Circle hasn't access easement, filed by previous flat.
So I guess chief's okay. There wasn't a comment, so I guess he's okay.
We have to add a fire hydrant for his comment.
And I apologize for not touching base on those. The fire chief did recommend hydrant locations, and the reduction of the two entrances, he didn't have a concern with because they've reduced the number of units below 30, which doesn't require more than one entrance. And the city engineer as well stated that they must include the detention, which they did provide the detention notations on the plat that will be underground pipes and resubmit, which they've resubmitted the sheets as requested by the city engineer.
I have a question. Has to do under the fire department comment, so there's one entrance, and you talked about that narrow spot with the streets, you know, the narrow, so our equipment can get back there, correct? All right. And then note, there will be no parking in those areas to assure that you have access from a safety standpoint, right? No parking other than in those parking spaces.
In the designated parking places, that's correct. The garages are contained.
One thing to notice, there are garages on the back, so there won't be parking behind anyways, just to clarify that part.
And all that curb will be painted red, right, to restrict fire.
If we're required.
If we're required. There you go.
Any further discussion?
My only other comment. It is 29 units. On the agenda, it said 28, so we are still in 29.
There are 29 yet, just now.
Okay, that's what the plan says. Okay.
Hearing no discussions, anyone have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary development plan for Brock Town House Isabel Court contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and Commissioner Collins.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Does in favor, yes? Yes? I suppose no? Motion is approved. We'll move to the proposed preliminary plat. We have any further staff report?
Concerning the preliminary plat, the comments that staff had have been addressed by the variance approvals that the planning commission previously approved. One of the items, 94-452, the clarification for lots and tracks, they've actually made that adjustment. The physical copies received did not have it, but on the, on the actual updated digital that there is, we requested the track B and track A were previously on the site. They're trying to replat it to take away those tracks and have the tracks associated with the current, and then having a lot or track number, which they provided Lot 30 for the open space area, so that a proper parcelization can happen with the assessor. So that's been addressed on the plat. All other comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the plat contingent upon meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments. Jason, did you have any other comments on the plat?
All right, thank you. Commissioner, discussion? Hearing no discussion, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat for Brock Town Homes Isabel Court contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and Commissioner Collins.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Does in favor, yes? Yes? I suppose no? Motion is approved. We'll now move on to the proposed landscape plan, and the additional staff report landscape plan.
Well, I'm going to let Jason have the helm on this one, since he looked it over.
So as you can see from the variance request, for them not to have the 6-foot privacy fence, they have really planted many more trees than need, many more trees than were actually required on that side facing Village Way. This is going to be their buffer, and they've also added plenty of trees along the road, so between the buildings and the sidewalk that will be constructed as well, they've put the trees in there, so they've gone above and beyond the landscape requirements of a typical site plan for this type of project.
And I'll add in, one of the requests we had was additional plantings in front of the units that are facing the parking lot to prevent any headlight onto the site, and then in addition, they did provide their irrigation ready on the site, so that is indicated for water irrigation. Staff recommends approval of the landscape plan contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and planning commissioner comments.
I did have one question on Buildings 5 and 6, since those face an intensity where from the parking lot, do you see a problem with those? If you patio and you balcony is overlooking a parking lot.
What are these?
That Building 5, that's, it's going to have a ton of green space.
Building 6 does.
Building 6 is right at that. I mean, it's right against the parking lot. You got a 10-feet separation.
It's...
One 10-feet in the way.
If...
I think that's going to be a little tough sell, but that's...
What is a carotisca of a billion?
If you look, you can't see it on here, but the existing residential lot that's on the northern side of this, that very, right there where he's pointing to, that house, the corner of it is maybe even three feet from the road right there. I mean, the buildings are really tied in there, so there's been precedents for, within this area, with having buildings that are really close to, you can kind of see it, it's right on it, and there's no landscaping. And of course, being a PRD, there's no specific, there's general zoning requirements that you try to follow, but they're not held to it. They can, so the, they are requesting lesser setback of the buildings than what is generally anywhere from five to eight feet, depending on the type of development.
I don't have a problem with what you're doing. I'm just making comments. I think those are going to be a tough sell.
Further discussion?
Of course, you got additional parking.
We got 21 extra parking spots inside ours.
Yeah, these folks are going to be parking, glad you have a crossword to work out because those folks are going to be parking in CCA lot.
Yeah.
And the visitors will, anyway. I would. Come in the back door.
It's actually the front door.
That's the front door.
Or is that the front side?
That's the front door.
Oh, yeah, it's rear garage, I'm sorry.
That's why I said, that's going to be a tough sell. It's going to be the front. They're out this way, I park every day. Yeah. Over two.
And speaking of parking, I think one of the, one of the things that may come up from the city standpoint that haven't really addressed it, but we've, from a code enforcement standpoint, we've been trying to deal with a car that's been parked on the parkway of the street that's blocking the pedestrian. There may be a need for no parking signs on this side just to prevent parking on the parkway, but I don't doubt, I doubt that's going to happen based on the nature of the roadway and people living there, they're not going to do it, but prefer not to have signs because it would take away from the aesthetics of the property, but anyway.
Okay, they poured an extra pad for additional vehicles, and they're still parking on the street every day.
Any further discussion on landscape plan? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed landscape plan for Brock Town Houses contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and commissioner comments.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Does in favor, yes? Yes? I suppose no? All right, motion is approved. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, OHS chair, space two. It's my understanding that the applicant requests a one-month deferral. Mr. Grummer, is that still the case?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have any discussion or such motion?
Do we need table, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, there'd be a, based on the applicant's request, they've requested just a deferral to next month, so if the commission wishes to grant that request, it would be a definite table until next month's meeting.
I still move for that.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
So just to clarify, the reason for this, the deferral by the applicant, is they had a engineer change after their submittal, so that's the main reason. Tim Daters has taken over engineering for this project, so it should be able to move much quicker afterwards, so they just asked for the one month so Tim could get all of his, all his ducks in a row, and I think he's having to recreate some of the development plan and the plat, so that's the rationale for...
This is the cul-de-sac, right? At the end of the road. All right, over there.
It might be the cul-de-sac.
Might, may not. Hammerhead. Could be something different.
Should not be anywhere.
Well, that's not permitted. That's another variance. Are you going to read the same code? No, I mustn't.
You have to keep reminding us.
I know, it is tough. It's tough. It's your job, and I appreciate it.
She's trying to keep us out of trouble.
But I appreciate it. I do, I do. I mean, I'm being sincere.
Any further discussion on the pending motion? All right, does the favor yes?
Yes.
Let's suppose no. All right, deferred until next month. Moving on to item number four, the code amendment regarding the grading permit. Mr. Grover, staff report?
Mr. Chair, we placed, so all of you were provided the grading permit. This grading permit came across your desk and was approved last year. It went to city council. And during that process, the mayor met with representatives of the local development community who had additional concerns and comments. So upon the mayor working with those developers, it was made the choice, it was best to send it back to planning commission based on the level of changes that were made. So what you have in front of you, we provided and sat down in front of you an additional copy, which actually, and you were sent out, that showed the changes from the previous time that you approved and what changes are here. The items in red are ones that the city staff changed. But then also, we had comments that came in from Commissioner Johnson that he wished for those to be shared for simplicity purposes for tonight. Those are in blue. And those comments, I've actually numbered one through, I believe, a total of ten comments or modifications that Commissioner Johnson has requested. And so rather than myself kind of going through it, allow, if there's any questions concerning what has been provided on the changes, otherwise I'll let Commissioner Johnson kind of share his thoughts.
I mean, I went through this. We want it, we don't want it to come back. So I read it a little bit carefully. Carefully, stop. Because they didn't even offer a comment back. They just gave it back. And then our mayor did a lot of work on it, which I appreciate too as well. So I added a few comments. They're, they're really, it's really neutral from the standpoint. It's just kind of tightening up a couple of things. One is getting a competent person on site. I can go through all of them, but you know, it's just a, getting, making sure that we have a competent person. We remove competence designated, making sure that the applicant, they come in, the permittee, is that that is, that is assigned to that entity, to who that person is, and that they are responsible and they could read plans and specs and do the duty that's before them. To get it approved, stormwater prevention plan done and completed and actually presented, I put that in. And then I tightened up the requirement on the tree. I've worked in, and actually I just finished, I have a project that's ongoing that we're protecting these pecan trees. So I worked with a landscape architect. And so I tightened up what we had to do there to be able to protect the tree. So I've become a little bit more educated with the landscape architect with those, protection of those measures. So I adopted the same thing, which is a little bit more stringent. But after I did some Googling, it appears to be common with, that same language appears to be common in other cities as well, too. I don't get me quoting which one it was. But it's actually going past and beyond the critical drip line a little bit. Uh, let's see, I think that's, other than the mayor's comments showing, showing those, those areas on the tree. It's gonna require them to go out there and measure caliber the distance. So it's gonna be even a little bit more burdensome for the applicant. But to be done right, that's what you have to do. I guess that's it, unless somebody has any questions.
I did have one question and comment. We do have a tree board, do we not?
We used it.
I understand that we do. We do?
Yes, sir.
Have they looked at this? Because a lot of what's in here has to do with trees.
No, sir.
Should they not look at this and give their input also?
So the tree board hasn't looked at it. We haven't submitted it to them. They haven't typically been involved in ordinance changes or the planning process regarding development in the past. And I didn't, I didn't think so. So that's why I didn't submit it. So if you're asking me if I think it should, I would say no.
Well, yeah, I'm looking at it from a standpoint, we talk a lot about trees in here, and that's one of the things on grading, is not removing trees and replacing what they listen to. And that, what the tree board is there for?
No, no, sir. The, a number of years back, before I was mayor, the tree board was trying to, there were members of the tree board that were working to institute themselves into part of the planning process. So in other words, if you wanted to bring a development in, it not only went to the tree board for approval of the trees, but the planning commission for the things that y'all see. I think that there was concerns, of which I shared, that the tree board would be better suited for the sorts of things that it is, which is promoting trees, the protection of trees, some of the heritage trees. But that the planning process was better suited to the planning commission. And I, I still hold those beliefs personally. Yes, sir.
Even before you, Mayor, and for city attorney, this body also functions as the tree board. You know, it was Mayor Johnson that separated.
Well, I, I don't know that they're separated in the way that you, that some people think. So for example, y'all still review the landscaping plans. That doesn't go to the tree board. So the planning process regarding trees is handled by the planning commission. The promotion of trees, the Arbor Day fest, celebration and the like typically goes to the tree board. I also wanted to really quickly hit on the primary reason, when this went up to the council, I had a number of primarily residential developers come forward and point out a number of things that were really unanticipated consequences. Commissioner Johnson mentioned some of his changes, but I think it should be mentioned what the, the primary purpose for the changes that I worked on, that Scott worked on with me, and that my chief of staff, Sarah Smith, worked on, were geared, probably the number one biggest change is this was originally anticipated for a number of properties that we had in the city and some properties outside of the city that we'd like to come into the city. But the current city regulations would find that their property was not nearly as marketable as it is outside the city. So probably the single biggest change in that vein was regarding whether or not the grading permit was a necessity for every single development or was merely an option that could be used if you didn't want to take the traditional rounds. The way the previous ordinance worked is the grading permit would then be instituted in every development, whether it was a residential development, whether it was some of the stuff y'all seen tonight, or whether or not they were wanting to do grading to prep the lot for a future use. And those were all sort of clumped together. So a number of the concerns by the residential developers are basically addressed by saying, no, this is, this is merely an option that you can use if you don't already have a mechanism that would allow you to grade. And so that's why the grading permit is so stringent, is it isn't necessarily designed for every development. It was designed for those developments that were occurring to allow folks to grade. Thus the five-to-one or one-to-five replanting and all of those heavy, heavy requirements that aren't seen anywhere else in the code. I think that clarified most of the changes. And then there were just issues that, that they had that, that could be resolved by maybe better defining a term and some issues that aren't being resolved. And that's why. So it's a little more than your question. In my opinion, the tree board doesn't need to see it, the more appropriate body for reviewing landscaping, trees, et cetera, is the planning commission. And the tree board has its own separate and very beneficial program.
Okay, well, you know, my, my position was the fact that what we're looking at is a development. Let's say it's a, well, practice spot, and there's a bunch of trees on that, you know, it's gotta be graded, gotta be taken down. There is the piper development, that's the big one. And so what do you do with that? And it's preserving trees and replanting of trees elsewhere. And I, you know, again, I thought that the tree board was functioning in that kind of capacity also. And there was also some mention in here, it talks about significant trees. Well, I can't find anywhere in the bill where anything is defined as a significant tree.
It should be defined in the, in this ordinance itself, which deals with the size of the tree.
Okay.
It's two-inch or four-inch, was it?
I wouldn't say it was, what, six inches, that's eight feet or eight inches?
It's eight, it's eight inches.
Eight inches.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that that's a significant tree.
Oh, you're saying that in accordance with what the tree board is defined?
Well, you know, there's.
No, but the.
There's a reference in here at the very beginning that says something about a significant tree. Well, what's a significant tree?
It's.
Now later on, it talks about different sizes on the place and, you know, all this other stuff. So I, you know, I was a little confused on what that was all about.
Yes, sir. I don't have it in front of me. It, there should be a definition of what a significant tree is in the ordinance.
On this markup copy, it's on, it's on the middle of page five where it says that. A tree is, a tree is significant if it is a tree and it is, has a longer list. And then there's some exceptions, certain species will not be significant trees, et cetera. So it is, I mean, it is well defined.
Eight inches at the end or four and a half feet, that's there. And then they have a series of trees that regardless, it doesn't matter. You can cut them down, don't matter what they are. I don't matter what side they are. No, the whole impetus is how this, well, tractor supply kind of got all caught up in it a little bit. I think it was more of a timing thing for them because they had a definitive plan, is that we just, this will prevent, it will give somebody thought before they go in and have some definitive plan about how they're gonna approach a piece of property and market a piece of property. You know, the piper development, present coming in standing, because I know there's representations here on those on agenda. But it's like, it, it gives them pause about how they're gonna plan that out. Because if they are gonna cut it open and cut down the trees, they, they need to be coming with a plan pretty quickly. I think it was eight months, six months, eight months?
Eight months.
Yeah, eight months. So, or they're gonna be in the replanting business. And that's what the desire is. And I think the mayor's staff did a good job of kind of, once I got back in it and read through it, of cleaning up the, I think, the residential concern, which is, I think, different than the commercial concern completely. Because usually when you get into, you do the lots, when they're clearing, they're balancing. So they're moving dirt from one side of the road to the other, they're building up lots, cutting down lots and making it marketable for them so the builders can come in and build houses. That's, that's what's going on there. You know, commercially is that it, it can just all fall apart, as we know. And then you end up with a bar pit, and then you end up with what's on the other side of the automotive shop between there and Walmart. And that's what we're trying to prevent. Me personally, anyway. We don't want.
Further discussion? Does anyone have a motion as to the recommendation to council?
I make a motion that we propose to send this on to city council with the code amendment update for the creation and implementation of a grading permit. Let's see, anyone else getting any other comments or questions from staff or commissioners?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Does the favor yes?
Yes.
Let's suppose no. We will issue a second recommendation. I will now close the public hearing. We'll move on to liaison reports, meeting on January third. Fisher, Fisher?
All right, for January first, the two items on unfinished business was the event center. Both those passed. Under new business, you had the preliminary development plan, conditional use permit, again, for the event center. But that, both those passed. And then there was a resolution approving, revised exhibit map for the Bradley property. And that passed.
All right, thank you. Fisher, meeting on January eighteenth. Commissioner Winnick?
Yes. So on first reading ordinance ten fifty-seven amendment to zoning map, that was with regards to the O'Reilly Senior Community Edition. So that was the second reading. That will move to February for second reading. And then resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero five, conditional use permit. That, let's see, that was the reading of the resolution granting a conditional use permit for senior living in the C two district. That was postponed and tabled to the February meeting. And that was it.
Assignments for month of February, February seventh is mine, and February twenty-first, Mr. Ramsey, that is yours. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So any discussion? Does the favor yes?
Yes.
Why can't it postpone?
Let's suppose no. We are adjourned.
The living center update.